Welcome to Santa Barbara Talks with Josh Molina. Such a pleasure today to be here with Santa Barbara City Councilman Eric Friedman, who I have to admit and confess, and he knows this, and I talked to other council members about this, doesn't get quite the ink, so to speak, of some of the other council members. I don't quote him as much, but is really nothing personal. I actually really enjoy every time he talks, but Eric, you're just so smart. You know, you don't have these like little pithy soundbites, you know? And so it's hard to take that and quote that, but I always enjoy hearing you talk because as soon as you flip on your mic, I learn, I can understand, you're going to explain it to everybody. So such a pleasure to have you on the show, Eric Friedman. How are you doing today?
Great. Thanks for the intro and for beefing me up there. You know, I know sometimes I get some quotes in there, but and sometimes there are other people's quotes and you quote those. So sometimes I'm going to use other people's quotes, but that's all, it's always funny. I just try to explain it. So yeah.
You are a master of your own quotes and other people's quotes. So I try to get you in the paper as often as I, as I can. And so I appreciate this format because we can just have a conversation and we can listen to you talk. I want to dive right in and talk to you about outdoor dining and the parklet fees that the city council has been talking about. There was a vote this past week and basically last minute it was to charge, I guess, $2 a square foot. I guess it's like a flat fee, no, nothing complicated anymore in terms of how much space you're going to take for restaurants to be able to have their tables and chairs in the public right away. All of this, of course, is a fallout of the COVID-19 pandemic. That's how it originated. Eric, you expressed frustration. You said you were disappointed with the council because the council changed. It did something different than what originally was going to do in January. So can you talk a little bit about why this was so important to you, why you felt so strongly about this whole situation?
And thanks for the opportunity to kind of do a little deeper dive into it. And so we all have the ability to change our minds. It's on the agenda and you can do that. And, and I'm not saying that we, we couldn't, shouldn't partake of that if we so choose. But part of being on the council and setting expectations and for the community is that we constantly move towards achieving a goal and there's a lot of effort and a lot of work and a lot of homework and research that goes into these decisions. And then when we come to a point where we have the big council meeting and the major council meeting on administrative agenda and it's publicly noticed and that this is the, this is where we're making the decision on what we want to do, in this case with the parklets. That is where the public knows that, that this major decision is being made. So those with an interest on all sides of the process come in. That's when we receive emails, that's when we receive more public comment in the chambers on, online. And when we make that decision, that's what the public expects the decision is going to be made. And so the nuance, the nuance is that many times those decisions require a follow-up on a consent agenda item just to ratify what we were going to do. And it could either be legally, you have to adopt the resolution, that could be budgetary things, whatever it is, or new ordinances. And it's just a continuation of the work that's done. And so what happens is when we change our mind on the consent calendar, because individuals have approached us during that week, we haven't heard from all the people that the previous week who are engaged. So they get taken out of the process because they think we've already made a decision. And then all of a sudden we're, we're back flipping our votes when those individuals weren't there. So it is a transparency issue. You could argue it either way, but for me, it's when you have the big hearing, that's the time to make your decision. It also, for me, it affects my ability to trust what we're going to do on the council because I rely on my colleagues to go to present the information and vote that way. And now when we have these big hearings, I don't have the confidence on some of these that we're going to go forward and continue to do that. So I'm like, is this the final decision or do I have to say that the consent item a couple of weeks later is going to get pulled, have another public hearing? And it's just not a good way to govern. It's reactive rather than achieving, working towards a goal. And that was part of it. The other part, there was major budgetary implications on it. And what really kind of threw me for a loop, and I think a lot of people, including some of my fellow colleagues on the council, was when Mike Jordan and Kristen Sneddon advocated for his, not even charging any rent at all. And that was a really, I don't even know where that came from. And that, and again, that was something that wasn't part of the agenda. It wasn't ever part of the conversation. And so it just really, just process wise and making sure we're transparent and we're having the public hearings at the right time on the administrative calendar. It's just something I feel strong about.
Yeah. So I'll get it out there. You can say whatever you want. I am the journalist, so I want to tell the truth here. Just to name a little bit of names, you know, Councilwoman Alejandra Gutierrez, back in January, was very strong about approving something, some kind of fees. And I think at that time it was like $5 a square foot, you know, there was a range, it was a variable range, but $5 was kind of the, the standard. And it was right after those storms. It was a special meeting on a Thursday. We had heard that some of the business owners wanted the meeting postponed. And then Gutierrez said, no, there's always going to be something, right? We, we have to plan for our budget. Rebecca Bjork, the city administrator chimed in and said, if we don't do this, this way, we might have to tap into our general fund or parking, might have to look at parking fees, all of these other things. And Alejandra Gutierrez was very strong about, let's do this, like we can't wait anymore. And so I guess, I don't know why there was a gap between January 9th and then all the way to when we had that meeting in, in, in April. But there was that gap, but it was on the consent calendar for sort of just like you had outlined, a formal final approval. But we know what happened, right? The downtown business owners met with her, okay? And they talked to her and they talked to other members of the council as well, as of course they should do, right? They're, they're trying to influence the council. There's nothing wrong with that. This happens all the time. Santa Barbara is a small way. If you look at county board of supervisors, oh my goodness, you know, the backroom dealing that goes on there. But it happens in Sacramento too. So we know that that happens. So she changed her mind. So it's like, wow, you're, that's like a departure for you because you were the strongest in the other way. And then this past Tuesday, Mike Jordan said, no fees, which was stunning. Like I, I don't, I don't know how he can ever make an argument again about being fiscally responsible. When you advocate for zero, he went with the two, but zero? I mean, even the business owners thought we should pay something. They should pay something. And then Kristen Sneddon, you know, again, very surprising to hear her say that, support the zero. And so that was what was happening. Meghan Harmon had always been for no fees or very little fees. She's been consistent. I think Oscar was kind of for no fees or minimal fees, you know, initially. And we know Randy's position and he wants to charge because he believes that that's a very strong public use of the outdoor space. So we have all of these dynamics going on, on the council. What do you think's going on, Eric? Like why, why, why would Mike Jordan, who you've agreed with fiscally, financially before? Why would Kristen, is this a, is this a politics thing? I mean, I would say to them, they know better, right? What's going on?
So I, I can't speak for them and I honestly, I was caught flat footed on the zero charge that they both advocated. Going back to when Alejandra, the week before or two weeks before on the consent, got it continued for the week. I, I had thought, I knew there was going to be public comment. I knew there was going to be discussion on it, but I didn't expect that it would come from one of the members of the council who had supported this to continue it. And so that caught me a little, that caught me strangely, I want to put it because I don't, I didn't think that would happen. I thought we might have a discussion. I knew the item might get pulled and we would have continued on. But then at, at that meeting, again, Mike wasn't at that meeting, as I recall. But then Kristen supported what Alejandra was doing and continuing it. So it got continued. And then when it, when the zero came out, the advocacy for zero, that was where I felt that the meeting went off rails. And that's ultimately why I abstained because of the abstention. People say, why did you abstain? Why didn't you just vote no? And I could see why people say, I should have voted no or went out, but no, because the reason for the abstention was a protest of my colleagues that we can't do business like this. We can't make decisions, we can't make decisions and then constantly backtrack by whoever has our ear the last because there was no new information presented to, that was any different than what we had previously voted on. And so, and, and I came to that conclusion one way because as you mentioned, Meghan Harmon and Oscar had been consistently voting the other way, based on the same reasons that ultimately were articulated. So if we're going to make these major changes, then give some new information that, that was there. Because if there's not, it's hard to justify the change. And for, and for, so that reason, and then in terms of just the budget, it's like $600,000 is what it's supposed to, is what it's estimated to cost. The restaurants were, owners were saying, hey, we're okay with the three to 350. So if they're okay with that and they think it's not going to impact their bottom line tremendously. And then to advocate for zero, well, where does that money come from? I honestly was like, are, are we not city council members? Are we members of Congress? Because can we print our own money now? You know, that's what the federal government does. And as, where's this $600,000 going to come from? I still don't know where it's going to come from. And then when they ultimately decided to make a, to make a motion for the $2, it, it was like, it was like the Price is Right to me. It was like, you, what you get, you get a, you get your own parklet on beautiful downtown State Street for however long. What's the price? What's the value of that? And it's like $3 is what the restaurants run. Somebody thought, hey, I'm going to do the $1 bid, just like the Price is Right to see if I could win this. And then they set it on $2 and I think, why wouldn't you do three? Because that's what the restaurant, because then we have to make that up. And by we, I mean the public who is paying into the tax base. Because it's ultimately most likely to come out of measure C. And that is, I have other issues that were my priority for measure C, that we should be investing in other than that. And even if we ultimately went with the three and subsidized it, okay, that's fine if we're going to make that case. But to advocate for zero and then wind up with two when they were willing to go with three, it just felt like it was a false choice to have to do yes or no on this because the hearing was, to me, it was nonsensical in so many ways.
Yes, it was very nonsensical in many ways. And that's no judgment on the restaurants and the outdoor dining. I think that what I'm trying to point out is the government decision and the process. It's obviously great to eat outdoors and outdoor dining is great and having cars gone is great in a lot of ways. So it isn't about them. It's really just about, well, you know this, you're, you're a parent, Eric. Like you, you, you'll lose respect, your kids will lose respect for you if you constantly change your mind at the last minute. And if you stick to something, may not be the best decision, but you stick to it. That's structure and you develop expectation and then, you know, maybe you learn along the way and you make a different decision down the road. But there's just something about leadership, whether it's a fault, small family system or something like a city government, where there's, there's safety in structure and knowing that you can count on what you talked about the last time you talked. And I think that was sort of what was a little bit odd. Can you land on, or can you, can you comment on State Street and outdoor dining thing? I think you make a different position than Randy Rouse on this. So can you articulate that?
Yeah. And I appreciate that, that question. Again, this, this was another reason why, why I abstained on, on the vote. Is because I felt I had to make a decision in the moment because again, I hadn't expected that to be the conversation. And I'm rarely caught that off guard in a meeting on that. I try to look at all the different scenarios and prepare for wherever the discussion might go. But in this case, I thought that if I had voted no with Randy, it would have gotten jumped in with, with his reasoning where, where he has been vocal, he wants to reopen it to cars at some point. I am of the position where I think a majority of our public is and, and obviously the majority of the council is that they're having benefits to having the, the promenade. And we are in this transitional period. I think people understand that while the state street master plan is getting developed. But we can do, for me, we can do more to activate State Street and bring more, bring more of the, the residents from other parts of town back downtown. For example, for me, it was saying that, hey, I support having outdoor dining. I think there's a benefit to that. But what I'm hearing a lot is, hey, we want parades back down on State Street. At least with the holiday parade and the, the Fourth of July. And there was a way, and this is, this gets back to my whole frustration with how things wound up, is that if we would have had all the parklets made the decision in the council months ago, when we said, hey, all new parklets coming in have to be portable. If we would have required all the existing ones to also be portable with no roofs, we would have had the ability to have, to, to look at parades, other activations on there. And that would have been information on, that we could give to the State Street Master Plan Committee. For example, let's have a parade. Let's see how it impacts all the businesses that have the parklets and see if they really can pull them up on, on shorter notice and what the benefits are not. Because, and then we would say, hey, this actually does not work, or maybe it does. And that's information when we do that actual final plan that we could have used, but we have, we don't have that opportunity. There's also an aesthetic benefit to one of the most historic districts in El Pueblo Viejo that having no roofs on these structures provides, it provides better visuals. It allows when you're walking up and down the street to see the shops behind those. And for me, one of the, the major sticking points on this is a prime example is at the Arlington Theater, we have this large parklet that is obstructing the Arlington and it's not in any way conforms to the architectural and aesthetic history of, of that part of town. And it turns out that parklet's not even open for lunch. It's only open for dinner. And there's a number of parklets. I think there's from staff. And then there was six parklets that aren't even open for lunch. And some of those are them, are the larger ones that have the roofs and are not portable. There's another one that's only open for lunch on Saturdays. And there's even some more that are only open for lunch on Thursday, Friday, Saturdays or, or Friday, Saturday, Sundays. So when those parklets taking up that much space aren't open during the day, it creates also dead space. And so all of this, going back real quickly is, all of this was considered by the ad hoc committee. We, and this is where Mike and Kristen and I'm thinking about the other member, but developed these recommendations that came with staff out of the ad hoc committee. That's another thing I was frustrated with. Created a committee, you worked with staff, you checked in with the public, you developed these recommendations, staff went and implemented them. And we went through a whole process where anywhere along the way, you could have changed course, but you didn't. And you, it came to council and we voted on your recommendations from the committee. And then to switch it at the last minute, I'd be like, what have you guys been doing for the last six months? And to me, it's like, what is, what does that mean to staff? It's like, we keep doing what you say we're doing. We have 101 projects that we got to do other than this. And it all came to nothing. I mean, what we ultimately resulted in, that could have been done in a day and a half. You just call up the restaurants, what do you guys want us to charge you? They'll say $2. You go to Rebecca and say, how much revenue is that going to be? And we'll say, okay, if we came in at $4, we could cover the rest. You go back to them and they'll say, okay, let's come in at three. Now, I mean, it's not that simple, but it is in a way. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Well said. Let's move on and talk about some other city issues. I do want to say, because I know Councilwoman Alejandra Gutierrez watches the show is, I do appreciate her activity and involvement and willingness to be a player on the council. And that's good. So it's not really a judgment of anybody, but understanding that there's seven of you and there's a process. And for all the reasons you articulated, that final vote was odd. But I, I will, as a journalist, it's better to see elected officials doing insane things than being quiet and not doing things because that's why they're elected. So I will say that. Let's shift gears and talk a little bit about something in your district, which is Lacumbra Plaza and the big housing project that has been proposed there by the Taylor family. It's originally was 695 units. It may have been reduced by now, but it's a big project. Of course, it clashed with the city wanting to do its specific plan. The developers submitted a pre-application. The city got back to them and had a kind of a long list of, hey, you got to do all these things. And the big issue of course is the height. City charter says nothing more than 60 feet. This project, depending on what part, is high as 84 feet. What's the latest on this housing project, Eric?
So this is arguably, it's going to be the, one of the largest projects in, in the history of our city when you consider this. And then ultimately the redevelopment of Sears property and then down the line, whatever happens with the mall, with which Macy's controls. So, so right now, the latest with that is that the application was submitted to our community development department. Community development reviewed the application and then they, it's not, not complete. And so they sent back comments to the project applicant, the Taylors. And right now, that's all I know. The ball is in their court to respond to the staff comments. And then once they do, then it'll come back to the staff and then we will see how they, our staff will see how they responded to, to the comments to, to get the application complete. And there's a certain time window that they will have to respond. So I don't know what the comments were from staff to the applicant. Those aren't shared with council for obvious reasons. You want the, that process to be independent. And so right now it's kind of a waiting game to see where they're going to be and where it goes. But, but overall, this is a very challenging project because as you mentioned, it has implications on the, on the city charter. And primarily when every member of council is elected, more than anything else, we're, we're elected to uphold the city charter. That, that is the city, that's our city functions. And so we now have a project that goes beyond what we're able, what we're able to do in the city for the charter. But at the same time, there are all these changes in the state housing laws, produce more housing, take away local control, including in charter cities. And so it's, it's created this clash between what the Taylors are proposing based on state bonus density and other state laws versus what we want. And we want the ability to control our city. And there isn't really a test case like this that I'm aware of that, that says, hey, charter cities, you, you have more authority than you think you do, or hey, even charter cities with, like ours, where you have a height limit of 60 feet. Too bad. And to test that out in court is not a, not a place you actually want to be because in one, very expensive, very lengthy. And if you lose, it could have major implications, it would have major implications beyond Lacumbra Plaza for the entire city. If you were, if it was to go down a path and it was lost. So there's a lot of things that are being evaluated right now and, and we'll have to see how they play out. I don't have answers. This is all things that the community is talking to me about, that I'm concerned about. And so the, the major issue is the 74 feet and what that has on the city charter. And, and how we figure out what, what do all these state laws mean in terms of our ability to, to, to control that?
What are you getting? Can you just summarize most of the feedback Eric Friedman gets from his constituents about this project is in support or not in support of it?
So in, in my particular district, most of, most of it is that they are strongly concerned about this. They, they think it's going to create a lot of, not only traffic impacts, but just other impacts to the, to the area. And they're also concerned about where, how are we going to fit everybody there when it's, you know, a couple thousand new people potentially? And so in that part of town, the circulation is different than anywhere else because the way it was planned, you know, going back 30, 40, 50, 60 years ago, there's only State Street to get down, to get downtown. You could do somewhat on Caireal, but once you get past, past Hope, there, there isn't another side street to go around like you can anywhere else downtown. It, it, there's just, there's no way to really get around things other than going to residential neighborhoods. And so the, the concern is like, this is going to be huge, just huge impacts. And the school, the school, Hope School District is concerned about it because you're going to have all these new units there. And even with the elevation, I've talked to the superintendent, even with elevation and property taxes, it most likely would not cover some of the things that they're going to need to do in terms of if they need any new infrastructure, new classrooms or, because it would take multiple years to get to where they need to be once they understand how many new students they have. But I think all those issues need to be resolved. So. And there are some that say, hey, we need to build housing, you know, we need to build, build, build. And I understand that as well. We have to meet the unit numbers, but, but that's a lot of units to put in an area that has circulation problems as it is. And there isn't really an easy way to address.
And then just quickly, there's that other half of Lacumbra Plaza that is owned by a different family. And what I reported was they're working with an Arizona housing developer there to maybe come up with a, its own proposal project. So we don't, I don't know how many units those are, 400, 500, something like that, I think I reported. That's a lot. And so it just goes back to that whole, too bad. There's not a specific plan to bring everyone together and sort of figure out what makes sense for the most amount of people housing needs as well as the surrounding community. Specific plan off the table? Or do you think there's a way to rewind the block here?
I don't, I don't see how we can get one now. The opportunity was with, with the grant proposal at SB CAG, Association of Governors. That, that was, I mean, that was the, their staff rated it as their, their highest project. And this is exactly the type of project you would want because you want to properly plan housing. And so you're exactly right. I think the Sears property is somewhere around 500 units. And then how do we not only interact, plan for those units, but how do they interact as a whole to make this a community? And maybe you could get there eventually, but this is too big of a project to put out to maybes and hopefully's. And a specific plan would have provided us more certainty. And I'm not necessarily so sure it would have, would have slowed us down because there are other processes in play that, that have to, that have to go out. So if, if we would have done this specific plan, when, when we had first proposed it, you know, started it, you know, a year plus, but it, it'd be halfway done or even longer now. And we would have, and we would have been able to look at, where's the parks and open space? Where do you put the utilities? What about the creek restoration that's going there? What is the plan for the middle to integrate the mall with the two housing sites and, and those types of things? What about bus circulation? You know, we need MTD. Is it going to have to have more services up there because you're going to have, you know, a thousand plus or around a thousand units? And they're not all going to be able to be right on the State Street side because if ultimately you live on the Sears side, you're not going to want to walk all the way down to State Street to get there. So, so MTD, how are they fitting into this and all those types of things? And that would have been the specific plan. But at this point, you know, the project's been submitted for the Macy's parcel and that's where we are.
Yeah, it's one of the big disappointments of government, Doss Williams, leading the charge to kill $1.1 million of state money to go to like city government to develop a specific plan. And it was raided by two different committees as, you know, the top priority. I still sort of don't understand that and my journalistic instincts are, there's something else there, you know? But how, that's unfortunate. That's sad. And it's not even, it's not even his district. It's your district. So it must be very frustrating. Let's talk about the city budget, Eric. We're about to go into the budget sessions, budget hearings. The budget's been presented. What is of interest to you? What are you concerned about? Obviously there's a deficit. There's a projected more deficit in the next year. Pensions, how, how, what's going on with the budget from your perspective as terms of what the public should care about?
Well, I think we need, we need, we really need to watch what happens in the economy, especially over the next, you know, coming months and in a couple of coming years. The state of California went from 100 billion surplus last year. I was just at a League of Cities dinner last night and they reported out that it's actually estimated the deficit this year was originally 25. It's projected closer to 40 to 50 billion. And that's how you, that's how it changes in one year. And if it's changing at the state, there will be implications on us. So, but overall, I think that the public needs to look at how we're, we're, we're spending within the city on unnecessarily. And if we have efficiencies, because we do have these structural deficits and that are going forward. And, and a lot of them are out of our control and the pensions is a, is a huge concern. We have, like most agencies, we have an unfunded pension liability. And because the stock market this year and last year hasn't been performing, that actually increases the unfunded liability we have. And so those costs go up and they, and those come basically out of the general fund. They're, they're projected to raise another three to four million each year. And within a couple of years, a couple of fiscal years from now, we could be paying as much as $40 million annually for the unfunded pension liability, whereas just a few years back, it was closer to 20 million. So, but at the same time, we're part of a larger system with all the government agencies and how we compensate employees. So it's not as simple as just, you know, don't have. Don't have such good pension pa- packages on and don't and don't, because the other agents, a lot of those are vested rights, most of them are. We wanna properly um, we wanna properly fund and have pensions for our, in particular, public safety. Um you fire and police who, those pension packages, they cost more, but they have a specific role that that. That is a large function of what government is. And then we have all of our other support staffs. We have our I T that does a great job running the city in terms of um. All although online services that we have, we have our Parks Department, our Libraries Department, our Community Development. And so the problem is that. It as we go forward and we look at staff compensation. Our cost of living makes it so that we can't, we actually have to be above what the median is. Because if, for example, if you have police officers that live down in Ventura County and they're driving up here every day. And their pay package is the same as somewhere they could get where they're twenty minutes from their home, where are they gonna go? They're gonna train here and they're gonna go somewhere else.
Hmm.
And so those are realities that we're trying to understand is what do we actually have to do to compensate our employees so they stay here? So. Uh another example is water and wastewater treatment plants. I mean, those are critical positions. That if we don't have proper um highly trained experts, and that's what our staff are. They will go to other agencies uh because they can offer better compensation packages. So that's part of it. The other is we we need to just. Continue to monitor our revenue and then um and set expect um priorities. Um but the good news is, we're not just throwing our hands up in the air. I do wanna say this, uh in terms of pensions, um the council and I. I am proud of all my colleagues on this because we've also unanimously supported this. Is we have moved in a direction to try to to manage that pension unfunded liability proactively. Uh we we pay upfront. Um we make a payment to the pension every year rather than monthly. That saves us a million dollars a year because we get that upfront. We started a a specific, it's called a one fifteen trust, where we're allowed. Where we take money, we take general fund money, we put it into this pension uh fund and it's up, it's, we control it and it gets slightly a higher rate of return. Than we would if we were just investing in Calpers. And then at a strategic time, as we build that pension trust and get higher returns. We can make greater payments. And so um it just gives us more flexibility and it it um makes it so that we're actually planning more for these increases that are coming up. So there's things we already are doing and that we're continuing to look at.
Yeah, that pension stuff is a big deal, but I just remembered you 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 prepaying allows you to save some and then the fund that you you're. You started or invested in, investing in, and that's a big deal. Um is there anything coming up like like fees people should know about? I know there was that one public commenter at the council meeting who was talking about. Disabled parking uh going away, free disabled parking going away. Uh is there anything like that that you know of? Are you just waiting for these department by department hearings, whether it's parks and recreation or downtown parking or any of the services people use in the community?
Yeah, there are, like every year, there will be, there will be fee um fee adjustments, increases. Um and again, it's. It's not ever ideal to increase them, but with the with the costs that are coming out, I mean, we we have to look at balancing the budgets. And in the city and and I want also add a um couple of things is the city is under the same types of pressures than everybody is with the cost of inflation. That's driving a lot of these too, a lot of issues too that we have to plan for. Um in terms of the fees, we are, I mean, those come up um yearly through through the budget process. Uh there has been but some public comment uh in particular, the community development about some of these smaller projects. That get these larger fees. And so we're looking at, maybe there's, if you're doing a small bathroom remodel, maybe. You don't have to go through that whole process where it's gonna add another three or four thousand dollars to your. To your bill for, which should be a three or four thousand dollar project becomes a ten thousand dollar project. So those types of things that. We have to consider if we make the fees too high, then people are just gonna go under the table and do it. And that's not what we want either. The one thing I would also just like to to um share is. The city has with the Finance Committee, myself and Alejandro and Megan on the Finance Committee. And are working with the City Administrator and the Finance Director. It's called Vision Twenty Thirty. It's the Physical Sustainability Initiative. And it's it's an innovative approach that we're taking and it's really saying, we understand these challenges are coming. So why don't we get out in front of them? What's it gonna take? And so we're looking at uh operational efficiencies. We're looking at where we can uh. You know, implement technologies to promote more efficiencies. We're looking at uh. We're doing a class and comp study for our entire city because one hasn't done, been done in thirty years so that we can better align the positions we have to the needs we have. And the goal is over the next, the remainder of this decade is to get the city in a position where we're optimally maximizing. Um the talents of our staff in the most efficient way possible. And that will create efficiencies that we have now. And part of the, part of the problem now is that with the budget. If we keep doing business as usual, we find ways that the public might not realize go into the balanced budget. For example, I'm a big library guy is. Part of the balanced budget, people say, oh, you balance the budget, but the library is closed two days a week. It used to, you know, years ago, it used to be open seven days a week, so it's closed on Sundays and Mondays. And that's how we're balancing the budgets is making those tough choices. So that's what the Vis- the Vision Twenty Thirty is about. And um looking forward to having that opportunity and be part of the shape that. And we're doing a lot of work on Finance Committee uh with that.
Yeah, you gotta keep those libraries open because a lot of those books that you get at, you know, you can buy, you know, online or local bookstores or whatever. Um you can read at the library, you know, it's you gotta be, you should, you know, so hopefully you can make that a priority. Speaking of library-ish and Library Plaza, let's talk about some good stuff going on in the council. Um. This project's been sort of going on for a long time. Are we nearing the end on the Library Plaza renovation and that? That space there, which is great space potentially. And I know there's a lot of interest in turning that into a vibrant area. Can you talk about the status of that?
Yeah, this, this is why I think everyone is is getting excited about it. The 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 plaza is under construction right now. It's been a uh over a decade in the making. And so the, it's tentatively, it's still scheduled to be um. Completed and open in October of this year. That's the 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 goal that we have and the timeline we have and. And all indications are, as things are progressing on this schedule, that in October. The community will have that as an open space. And I think that will actually bring a lot of energy back into downtown because we're gonna have this remarkable. Space and and it was made possible uh with the the great partnership with our Library Foundation. Uh who raised significant money, about five million dollars uh towards this project. Uh we partnered with them at the city and strategically moving, moving it forward. And. It can come at a better time as Towntown's in this transition to have this new space that will be opening up and bring people, they're bringing people downtown. And it's gonna allow events, uh festivals there, partnerships with the Granada for events, whatever we can think of. There's even um. Should even do movies in the plaza where you you use the Museum of Art wall as a movie.
Hmm.
Uh and then we're gonna continue to try to maximize the potential of that uh. The foundation is working on uh working with us to identify future renovations for the library, getting the second floor deck reopened, which has been. Uh out of commission for over a decade now, um possibly a commercial kitchen available so that if people wanna have or. Wanna have events, organizations wanna have events at the library, there would be that type of facility available. And then um. Building on the momentum we have is ultimately having a teen center on the second floor of the library um is is a goal. So. The library is gonna be uh transformed and when we get that open uh later this year. I think the public will see that, hey, we are making significant investments in the future downtown. It's gonna be great. Um with the library and then and then also the the changes in Delegara Plaza that are coming too. We're gonna have these great new open spaces that are programmable and can really bring people downtown.
Did you mention Delegara Plaza? Did I hear you say that?
Yep.
Splash pad, bubbler, water feature, whatever you wanna call it. Where does Eric Friedman stand?
I say, you know, if if we can have it for families to come down there. And you just wanna have maximum flexibility and have the greatest number of people come down there and enjoy it. I think ultimately um. That will bring families and everyone down there. And it's not like a a major, it's a minor part of a overall renovation. So. Um but ultimately, when you look at, when you look at flattening it out, and just having more space for the Mercatos and having actually electric hookups. Uh many of those cases at stage and everything, it'll, it'll, it'll be an asset to downtown to have those those changes um down there.
Yeah, and just to go back to your library stuff, love the library, the downstairs section, the kids section, uh renovated a couple of times. It's a really nice, great space down there. Um so, you know, all the things you're talking about that could happen, they're really exciting for sure. A couple of things before we wrap up, Eric, um it's two thousand twenty-three. District elections, the adjustment of elections to sync with the national stuff, even year, went from odd year to even year. So you got. Time, you got till two thousand twenty-six uh before you have to think about your next move. Um I understand you're termed out. Uh three years is not that far away for you to be thinking about your next political move. If you are, but uh what, can you talk? What is the future hold for? Are we gonna see Mayor Friedman one day or are we gonna see some other title before your name?
You know, I, you know, with each passing day, I'm getting the this question a lot more from on the community or people come up to me at Trader Joe's and like, hey, what are you doing next? You know, so. Um so Josh, you know, I'm a big fan of quotes, so I have one for you. So I read this book, it's called The Revolution of Robert Kennedy that a friend of mine gave to me. And it's a great book. I recommend it to anyone who really wants to understand uh Robert Kennedy. But in very early on the book, when he was Attorney General in nineteen sixty-two to his president, to his brother President John Kennedy. He was constantly asked, what are your own political future ambitions? And he had a great quote and he said. When you start to think about doing something else, you have a tendency to change. You have a tendency to plan for it. You can't help it. And so for me is, based on everything we just talked about today, for this year in particular. I wanna just focus on the city. I think that's, that's where I wanna be. I wanna finish out my term. Uh you know, it is over three years, but we have downtown, we gotta work on, we got um Locomi Plaza. So for me, I think. Events are gonna play out where they are and I'll look at my options, whether it's mayor or supervisor down the line, not, not next year against us. I don't want anyone to think that I'm gonna be running against Doss next year. I'll put that to bed because people have asked, are you gonna do that? No. Um but what I, what I would say is, let's get through the work that we're doing here and reevaluate um when the time is right and see where it goes. So I I haven't uh made any decisions on it for for the exact reasons. Like, once you do that, then your decision making is focused on that.
Yeah, and isn't that such a problem with elected officials when they start thinking about their next move, all of a sudden they become different people? But you love this stuff, Eric, right? I mean, you are a government, public service guy, that you're not just somebody who's. Necessarily doing this for fun, like you, you wanna make a long-term difference. Is that, is that a fair?
Yeah, no, I, I love being on city council, uh not, not all the time, you know, you get frustrated, but then you compartmentalize it and you. Do whatever, but that's just, that's just part of it is there's ups and downs, but it's really just looking at the the city and and what. What what does the public want? What do they expect? And where are there opportunities that you can make a difference? And I mean, one of the things that I. Uh in addition to the Library Plaza, which I worked on when I was a city library board for um for ten years. One of the things I'm really proud of is uh working with with Megan. Uh we strategized and we were able to create the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that we have, which is very innovative. And that's gonna pay dividends down the line in terms of having a local um local program to to go affordable housing. And those are the types of things that when you're focused on on the city and making it better, those opportunities come up. You understand how how the process works, the timelines and everything. Um and then when you look back, like that was worth it. It it made the city better, you know?
I'm sure you have a bright political future. Who wouldn't vote for a guy who is a Santa Barbara City Council member and then works at Trader Joe's at the same time? Speaking of, how is the Trader Joe's life for you these days? Can I see you stocking shelves? Are you at the register? You in the back? What are you doing these days?
Yes, all of that. Yeah, so I I work there a a few days a week. I work the early morning shift, so. I knock, I don't see you there anymore and it's because just scheduling wise, it's easy years for me for to do the um. I typically do a a five A M. to one P M. shift, so in there stocking. If you ever come into the one that I'm at and you go, go there in the mornings on the days I worked, you will see the nicest apples. All set up that you've ever seen and just know that your council member took an hour to put that together at least to get those apples just rotated just right. And get all the bad ones out. That's what I do at five thirty in the mornings on uh three days a week. How about them apples, Josh?
That's great. No, you'll find me at the Orange Chicken Frozen Food Section. That's where I'm, you know, loading up three or four, three or four bags. Eric, why do you work at Trader Joe's? I I I, this is a compliment, okay? Like, you would think that. Someone of your stature, right? You're very impactful. You have power in in one capacity of your life as a council member. And people need to uh work with you to get things done sometimes. But yet you will humble yourself and that's not to say, you know, nothing wrong with that job, but you just don't have. Elected officials who are doing that, you know, who are working at a grocery store and Trader Joe's is a great store, but. Talk to me, you could go have some other job. You don't, you don't have to be doing that. You you could be working in other ways as a job in addition to your council. You could have no job and just be living off the the uh city council salary. Um why? Why, why do you do that?
Well, if I, if I just had the city council salary, I'd I'd be, I'd be uh living off my wife's salary because she, 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 she is the one who wears the pants in the family. She works at uh at at Glita Valley, but um one of the things, it it just kinda happened by accident when uh. When my time ended at the county, when uh salute ran for for Congress. And so during that year, I decided, hey, I I wanna focus just on local, local issues and and uh focus on that and decide to run for office. And so I was actually looking for uh the opportunity to make career changes into uh fields of interest that that really interested me. But then it became quickly apparent that um it would be very hard to do both. Because some of the things that interest me, you really have to be able to put all your time and your energy in it, just like you do here on council. They're not halftime and halftime. And then I I thought about it and, you know, I applied at the Trader Joe's and ultimately got to work there. And it was. It was something to extra, extra income, obviously, for for the family, but um. But it was the, one of the best decisions I made because it's made me a better council member by far. Um than if I hadn't worked there. And it continues to that way because one is I, my coworkers are amazing. I met so many great people there, built so many friendships. And also have an understanding from the the community about what's going on because people come in all the time and they talk to me for a couple of minutes or not. And I've actually developed a number of friendships uh with people. And then we talk about it, we, outside of Trader Joe's, we'll get together and talk about, you know, different things that are affecting the community and. And or sometimes it's, you know, I'm at the register, someone comes to my line, I don't know who they are, but they say, hey, good job on that vote last night, or like, why'd you vote that way? And that's something I tuck away in my head. It's, it's almo- it's almost like a benefit of having open office hours three days a week for the public to come in and talk to me. Um in a limited sense, right?
Hmm.
But it, but it just, it just makes me um understand where all the residents are. Because when you're coming in to go grocery shopping, you're not in there for political conversation. You're in there because you wanna, you wanna, you have to do what you need to do just on a daily basis. And for them to say, you know, hey, this, this worked out well, you guys did this. It's, it's, it's pretty, um give me a better pulse of the community. And then that translates up to, to how I frame some of my um comments and my decision making on the council. So I I wouldn't change it right now. Even if I could, I I would stay there. I guess I could, but I don't wanna change it this way.
Right, well, everyone goes to Trader Joe's, you know, one of, one of their locations either, well, I guess there's what, three in town? So Kalida and other milk, is there one in Milpa still? Yeah.
Yeah, it's further up with Old School.
So you're really close to just like everyday people, which is what council members should be, you know, like connected to the constituents. So that's cool. I don't go to that one. I go to the Galita one. So so I'm a, I'm a good land guy. So. Uh but um yeah, that's great. Eric, I appreciate your time and you uh coming on and talking in detail about. Recent city stuff and uh just sort of sharing your mind and your information and your quotes. And it's always a pleasure to watch you on the council, even if I don't quote you or, you know, have you in every photo kind of thing, because nothing personal, it's just, you know. You know how media is, you're looking for those clicks, you know?
And I'm not in it to get uh to get, to get my photo in the paper. Some, sometimes I'm glad I don't, so. Depending on the issue. But yeah, but thank you, Josh. I appreciate the time and and the, and the opportunity to uh be on the show, so.
Thanks a lot. Have a great day. Take care.